I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Furlough?
Here.
Counselor Grizzle?
Here.
And Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And the city attorney will be here a few minutes late. He's running late and let me know. First order of business is oath of office. Robert Furlough, City Counselor for Ward 1. The city clerk will administer that.
He's raising right now. Repeat after me. I am Robert Furlough. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. The Constitution and laws. The Constitution and laws. Of the state order. Of the state order. And the city charter and laws. And the city charter and laws. Of the city of Lebanon. Of the city of Lebanon. And that I will faithfully perform. And I will faithfully perform. The duties of office. The duties of office. For which I have been appointed. For which I have been appointed. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Thank you. Congratulations.
He's gonna be sorry.
I'll say congratulations or sympathies. Welcome.
You folks have been very kind and I appreciate your trust and look forward to the opportunity to work with this fine group.
Good to have you.
You can't back out now.
Well, my wife is here to witness.
Okay, first up we have approval of council minutes, July 16th and 23rd, 2014 minutes. Were there any corrections or additions to those?
Move for approval.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council minutes from July 16th and 23rd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes pass. Consent calendar? Any corrections or additions on the consent calendar?
I move for approval.
Second. Wait, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve our consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar passes. Next up, we have a proclamation that I'll be reading. National Senior Center Month for September. Senior Centers Experts at Living Well Proclamation. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and better the lives of younger generations; and whereas the Lebanon Senior Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creative energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Lebanon, Oregon; and whereas through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of fellow citizens of all ages; and whereas the Lebanon Senior Center affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim September 2014 National Senior Center Month, and call upon all citizens to recognize the special contribution of the senior center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community. And I just want to comment that even after our budget cuts, how well the senior center has been running their programs and how many things they've been doing, new things, they've been doing a movie of the month, they've just got some really exciting things that they're doing, and I was talking to Kendra, the director, the other day, and just very positive things, so real excited about that, so very neat. Okay, next up, we have Gene Johnson from the Lynn County Tax Office, and coming to talk to us about the Lowe's appeal. Withdrawal.
Well, it is indeed a pleasure to be here this evening. I don't really have any new news that you don't know of. If you read the awesome article that Alex did regarding the Lowe's withdrawal, the main reason I wanted to come this evening was to thank you all for the support and on behalf of Lynn County for stepping up to the plate and taking on this endeavor, just to appreciate the financial support and all the backing. When I first took, or when this appeal first started, I was like thinking I was all alone and it was gonna be big, and that's when I decided, you know, I need help, I can't do this, and you guys did it. So that's the main reason is just to say thank you much. I appreciate it. And then if there are any lingering questions that you have about the status of the Lowe's property, I would be happy to make the best effort to answer any questions.
But good job.
Yeah.
Thank you as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for your office's efforts and your efforts and just sticking to it, and I'm just really pleased that we're able to move forward with this. Really positive.
Yeah, I look forward to, well, I'm probably gonna be retiring myself soon, but our office, you know, would like to keep that, the communication and the working efforts together with everybody that has something at stake. I don't think this has ever been done before that I had know of, and since then, one other county is talking about hiring outside council. The Oregon Department of Revenue, they take on bigger councils, and they saw what we all did here, and they're looking at that too. So we made an impact kind of across the state, I believe.
Nice.
Yes.
Thank you again.
Thank you for making the effort to come back. We really appreciate it.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, next up, we have public comments. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding cities' business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. And I have a list of people who have signed up that will go first, and the first person is Jocelyn Manguita? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So I'm Jocelyn Manguita, and what was, that's it, okay. I've never done this, I'm a little nervous, please forgive me.
Just do that.
It's not a big deal what I'm talking about.
It's a pretty easy, no problem.
So I actually, I wanted to talk to you guys about the chicken petition process. It's kind of a small thing, really, but we lived in Eugene and we had chickens, and there's actually no petition process, there's no permit process even in Eugene. So two years ago, we moved up here and we got chicks, and we, just this past spring, so that our children could experience having animals, you know, taking care of them, and they're behind me. We didn't realize that you had a petition process, and we found out because four of our eight chickens turned into roosters, and we don't have them anymore. We didn't mean to have them, but we, anyways, so we found out about the petition process. So it's 300 feet in all directions that you have to get your neighbors to sign off. So that's a football field in every direction. So we started, we went through two cul-de-sacs and a street, and, you know, you go around to each of your neighbors and you have, you know, you've got this look, they're looking at you like you're trying, you're about to sell something to them, and you're taking their time up, you know, and you need to explain, you know, I'm not selling anything, I'm just asking if I can have chickens, and I live three streets away from you, but yes, you have to sign off on this, and anyway, we got to a point where there's a, I ended up not finishing the petition because there's a neighbor who said no, they don't want chickens. So I would just say, man, that's fine, their property is connected to ours, so I don't, I mean, to change it from 300 feet to no feet is maybe drastic, but for the next people who came along, I thought maybe you could consider kind of changing it and making it more, maybe appropriate. Intech can get a permit to build with 100 feet of signatures around them, but to have chickens, you need 300 feet. So it can maybe be modified. I looked, just, I did a quick check. In Eugene, I said you don't even need a permit. In Albany, you can have chickens without a permit unless, if you want more than two chickens, then you need to get the written consent of the contiguous properties around you. In Philomath, it's a, you do need a permit, and it's a 200-foot sign-off. So I'm sure you could do more research, but that's about all that I have. Do you guys do questions? Do you have questions?
So once you got to know, you just stopped collecting signatures, then?
I just stopped collecting signatures. I would continue if, if you guys said I should, but I thought, you know, it's a whole neighborhood and an entire mobile home park next to our neighborhood that I have to collect signatures on, and it was 90 degrees that week, and the kids were going around, so I just stopped. So, you know, we have four chickens, and they are my kids' pets, especially my daughter, she, you know, they just, those are pets, but, you know, we want to be law-abiding citizens, but, you know, going forward, you might maybe look, take a look at that ordinance.
What was the main reason your neighbor said no?
I believe actually that it was our roosters that were crowing, that they, that got the process started, so it was our fault. We just hadn't gotten rid of them yet. We did the day after they complained to us, but they had already made the complaint to the city, and so the code enforcer has been in touch with us. That's what got it started. Honestly, I think that there's, in our particular case, they have an issue with a neighbor behind us who is their neighbor, and those two neighbors have an issue, and they're using the chickens as leverage in that situation, so we're sort of wrapped up in that.
That's too bad. It is a touchy issue. I'm an advocate of being able to have a limited amount of chickens, and, but livestock or that kind of thing, like your roosters, for example, can be really disruptive, and, you know, it can smell, and can, and you could hear, and how far can you hear it, and how far away do I have to be? I have a dog who barks like two and a half blocks away. Makes me insane, but it's two and a half blocks away, and it's not, so I don't have standing to complain in that case, but, yeah, I don't know what else there is to do for it, but we could look at it, look at, I mean, look at what, relook at what other municipalities do.
If I remember correctly, we just addressed this.
We did. We had one earlier this year where she did get the signatures, and it was a rooster problem, I think in the beginning, and then she corrected that.
Yes.
Yeah, but we dropped that because the complainer ended up signing her petition.
Right, right.
But we didn't address the, to see what other municipalities did.
No, that all worked out, actually, in that situation, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that made it easy for us.
When was the time the ordinances was updated?
Just trying to pull it up, I'm having trouble getting online. It's an old ordinance, I can tell you that, the last time I looked it up.
Maybe we could put that up as a review and go over that and just see.
Sure.
And we can look at maybe some of the other city.
Give everyone a chance to look at it and have knowledge.
Okay. How's that?
That sounds great.
I can just tell you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I just had a question, I don't know what to do next. If I should keep the chickens until there's a decision made, or?
How many chickens do you have?
Four.
Four.
What is, what is Officer Buchheit told you?
That I should come and talk to you guys and see if we could get the ordinance. I would imagine it's a lot of extra work for him to deal with all this. It makes sense to me that you would have actually not even a permit process, but a complaint process, so that if there is a problem, then he would need to get involved, you know, if it's a smell problem, really, I mean, they don't make so much noise, but that would make sense, and it would maybe save the city money.
I would not like to see the kids give up their chickens while we're in the review of the ordinance, and perhaps we could bring that back in September, Gary?
Absolutely.
Grant a little relief in the meantime?
In the meantime, I would say personally, my opinion is you keep the chickens until we review the ordinance.
Thank you.
If all my colleagues agree.
I would agree.
Yeah.
That's quite appropriate. And no roosters?
No, no, we got rid of them, we did.
Keep the roosters quiet.
And then how do I know when you've reviewed it?
Well, if you, I would suggest probably coming to the next meeting, 'cause we'll be doing the review at the next meeting in September.
Okay.
Second Wednesday in September.
Okay.
I think it's the 10th? Not sure of the exact date.
Our agenda's always on the website, too.
Yes.
So you can see it on, you can look it up and see our agenda and see that it's on there.
But just so I'm clear, changing the feet wouldn't matter because you actually, the person that has filed a complaint is contiguous.
Uh huh, yeah, in my case it is, but again, I thought, keep the people behind me that go through the process. Unless we changed.
That's what I was gonna say, the only way we could do it is if we didn't have the petition process.
If we changed it from a petition process to a complaint-driven, like we do most other codes, I think that's what you're saying, is if we, if that was one of the ways that other municipalities did it, instead of issuing a permit, then, then that would serve her purpose. If we did come back and decide, no, we're gonna keep the permit, and you do have, that you would have no choice at that point, but we would have a good discussion about it.
I would concur with that discussion, as long as the complaint process was driven by some legitimate issue, you know, that there was some, not a frivolous complaint, but, but some foundational element behind it.
I would suggest there's actually another way to do this, and that is to have a notice process where neighbors in a certain radius are notified and then given, you know, 30 days to comment, and those comments can be taken into consideration upon issuance of the permit. That's another way to handle it, so people are able to weigh in if they want to before it's issued.
Yeah.
I think also, our complaints that we've had has been with roosters, not chickens. That's what.
Yes, I believe that's true. In the short time I've been here, I was, I've been surprised, I've approved two chicken permits already, and in those permits, it's very clearly stated that roosters are not permitted. It states out several conditions that the permittee agrees that if there are complaints, then they're going to get rid of the chickens and so forth. So it seems like a pretty tight process at this point, once you get the permit, but, you know, it's probably fair game to look at the process of getting the permit.
And the different options.
And what makes sense and what's reasonable.
And how to mitigate any problems.
Yeah.
I think it shouldn't just be a yes or no, I mean, if it's an odor problem, how has the odor problem been addressed?
And it sure does give your neighbor an awful lot of power to, you know, to have a problem over something else, and then go, you know what, you got chickens.
Odors are addressed in the.
Concern about it being a frivolous issue.
Odors are among the issues that are addressed in the current permit process, and I, off the top of my head, I can't remember what the treatment was, but it's all spelled out in the permit, what happens if there's a complaint for odors, or if there's a complaint because of a rooster, or something like that.
Okay, we'll bring that back to the September meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would it be a good idea to issue, in this case, instead of just a verbal, give temporary permit?
I think in effect, you've done that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the record that the council has agreed to keep that in abeyance while you review the ordinance. I think that's all that's necessary.
From a legal's perspective, does that require a formal action, or just the discussion? Is that gonna be sufficient?
Well, I think the direction from the city manager to the code enforcement officer to hold off on administrative action is within his authority, based on a consensus of this council.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Bill Solon.
Evening, Mayor, Council. This is more of a statement, but times never change. I was at the library the Monday after the city cut budgets and et cetera and so on and so forth, and I, kinda reminded me when I was a building official or a building inspector. Those of you that have worked for the government, or the public, or that, you know what I'm talking about. I found out about all your family history and everything else under the sun, because you'd cut the library and the people could not use it. And I think those of you that's worked for the government or the public know what I'm talking about.
I don't understand.
You don't understand?
No, that we cut the library and people couldn't use it.
The public couldn't use it, and the city dads, council, and et cetera, were dirty SOBs, MFs, and all of that. I thought you worked for the public, Paul, before you got to say that.
I did.
And you never heard that?
I, I'm just confused.
You must have run with a different crowd than I was.
Yes, I did.
As contractors and et cetera, they're just like sailors.
So you're saying that the cuts we made closed the library down? I don't understand.
You cut the hours at the library.
Okay.
The people went down to use the library on that Monday, and Mondays was one of the days that they were shut down.
Okay.
And they was upset because they could not.
Okay.
Use the library.
We made.
Like I said, they went through your family history from the time you was hatched prior, right up through the modern times.
I don't get that part, but.
And the benefit was that to them?
Yeah.
Well, it was, they was blowing off steam.
They're privileged to do that.
Yeah.
Well, that's true, like I just said, it reminded me when I was working for the government as a building official or a building inspector, and I went out and I did something that upset them.
You got labeled.
That's right. They told me about my family history and et cetera, that I didn't know, my folks didn't know. So that's all.
The, just for information, you know, when we had to make the cuts all across the board throughout the whole city, everything took a hit, every department took a hit.
Well, I understand that, but this.
And ours was the one way we could still have the library and still have it, and one day a week, there's a lot of cities that only have, you know, they have one day a week that they're closed during the week, and we're still open on Saturdays, which we were trying to do. So I mean, I thought that there was a pretty good balance of keeping as many hours as we could open and still having programs, too, so it's a balancing act.
Well, I think the Monday closure was well-publicized, too. I thought, hey, it hasn't changed. I mean, I've retired over 15 years, and it's still the same stuff.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment?
I just gonna answer the question, on the water, or the chickens, it was an ordinance passed in 1983, so it's been a while.
Eighty-three. Wow, that is.
It seems like we revised it.
Oh, I'm sure there's been amendments to it.
Maybe in 2005, 2006, seems, it's been a while. You remember?
Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Move on to the regular session. Item number one, proposed sewer service on McKinney Lane, Ron Whitlatch, Engineering Services Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What we have before you tonight is a resolution to provide city sanitary sewer service to a property that is currently not within the city limits. We had a request from the property owners at 2240 McKinney Lane to connect to sewer line that was installed with the McKinney Lane Apartments. Their septic system has failed, and they are within 300 feet of a sewer line, so therefore, Lynn County will not allow them a permit to replace or do any repairs on that septic system. So we have it in our ordinance to allow for this, and it should also be noted that the property owners have submitted their request for annexation, and that is scheduled for the August 20th Planning Commission meeting, and then back to city council. So they have gone through the process and are willing to annex, but they're in desperate need of sewer at this time. So with that, I would recommend that we actually go through this process and allow them to hook to our sewer main.
Is their property contiguous to city limits?
Yeah, it will be.
Or is just?
Yeah.
Okay.
It leaves a space in between, but they still will be contiguous once you hook into McKinney Lane, so the people on both sides of them, I believe, if I remember the map right, wouldn't be, but they would be. So it doesn't create an island, but it's kind of a seesaw thing.
Nothing.
They are contiguous with city limits.
Since we passed the earlier, either, it must have been a resolution or an order, why does this have to come back before the city council? Why can't this make, be a ministerial decision by the city? Is there a?
It's in the municipal code, the city council has to approve any.
Even if they've already addressed it for that area, or?
Yeah, anybody that is more, that's requesting sewer service outside of the city limits has to be approved by the city council on an individual basis, is the way I read that.
And I was looking at that, I'm not sure that's, okay, we'll take a look at that. It seems to me that we could go through a process, because there's probably gonna be a lot in that area, isn't there?
I would venture to bet that that majority of that area, that's gonna happen here real soon.
I'm just thinking of a way that we can address that, because I, it's gonna be fairly common, I think, coming up.
And to expedite it, I mean, it's a, it's kind of a no-brainer for me, so to expedite the process for somebody who's got a, having a failed septic system.
That would be great.
Is not a fun thing day-to-day, and if, so if we had a process where it's just a no-brainer makes sense, and we can, they don't have to wait for a city council meeting, that would be.
Yeah, they've actually been waiting for a couple of weeks, and we've held off as much as, you don't wanna do that, wanna make sure that was, the approval was granted, so.
Ron, do we have a number of those that possibly would be requesting that?
We get requests, oh gosh, there for a while, we were getting a lot of requests from folks in that neighborhood. The biggest issue and the reason this is, this is so feasible is the sewer line's right out in front of their house, but the others, you know, they were gonna have to extend 300 feet of sewer main, or, you know, the costs pretty much in some cases outweigh what the property's worth.
So doesn't the code stipulate it has to be within a certain distance?
300 feet, right, so, so if, for instance, a couple that we've had, the sewer main stops, and they're within 250, 280 feet of that sewer main, so not only would they have to build the lateral, they would have to extend the sewer main itself, and those costs there would, you know, you're looking at $15,000 or $20,000, and most of those folks can't afford that.
No.
So.
Isn't that property in the suburban renewal district?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
My recollection was that when we formed that district, it was for exactly this part of, included this kind of thought process.
Yes, that was, it was designed in essence to provide services through that whole area through there, water and wastewater, you know, fortunately, one thing McKinney Lane Apartments did is they extended wastewater or sanitary sewer all the way out there, and water, so that, that's a, that's a benefit to the folks that are on McKinney Lane, so they'll be able to hook to that, you know, they just gotta go through the annexation process, and like I said, the way the code's written, it requires a council approval for anybody that's outside of city limits, so.
The developer of McKinney Lane Apartments, do they have a process for recouping some of their investment?
Yes, they do. That is through economic development agreement with the city, so all the connection fees, is it 90%? I have to look at the actual agreement, but they will get 90% of the connection fees for a period of time, so they will recoup some of their cost.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll have the city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution number 2014-33, resolution to provide sewer service outside the city of Lebanon city limits.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, resolution number 2014-33. All those in favor say aye.
I have to look at the, the actual agreement, but they will get 90% of the connection fees for a period of time, so they will recoup some of their cost.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll have the city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution number 2014-33, resolution to provide sewer service outside the city of Lebanon city limits.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and appro, moved and seconded, resolution number 2014-33. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution 2014-33 is passed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Number two, community vision facilitator RFP by Gary Marks, city manager.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll start that over again. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the community here present this evening. I have a PowerPoint here, so I'd ask those members of the council to position themselves so that they can observe this. I believe the date was January 24th of this year. I sat in this very chair, and I was not yet your city manager. And I cannot recall who it was, but one of you asked me a question, and that question basically had to do with, if I were going to be your city manager, what would be my plans for the city of Lebanon? And my response to you, not verbatim, but basically the idea was, I told you that if, if I sat here and told you what I thought you should do, you should run away from me as fast as possible. While I come to you with experience as a city manager from other communities, I don't understand Lebanon. I don't understand the history, or really where the community as a whole believes we need to go. And although I'm the new guy, and that's true of me, really, I don't think there's anyone in this room tonight who can truthfully say they completely understand where the community believes we should go, and what we want to look like as a community 20, 30 years from now. And so that really brings us to, or it brought me to my answer to you, and that is, if you hired me as your city manager, I would be recommending and bringing forward to you a visioning process, where we would develop a, a community vision and use that as the basis to move the community forward. So with that, there's four broad categories of, of the subject matter I want to address to you tonight. The first is going to be the who, what, and why of community visioning. The next will be the elements of community visioning. Then what community visioning is not. And then finally, what our process for the Lebanon 2040 vision looks like. So, the who. Who does community visioning involve? Well, it's a broad cross-section of the community, including, but not exclusively, but actually, this one is generally everybody, the public. Also, you could throw in there citizens committees, business and industry representatives, service clubs, nonprofit organizations, the Samaritan Lebanon Community Hospital, Comp Northwest, community schools, youth organizations, and you folks, and the city staff. And there's probably some categories I forgot, but generally, it's as, as inclusive as we can make it, that is who ultimately needs to be involved in the process. So the what, what is community visioning? It's the process of identifying what a community and/or organization should look like within a designated period of time. It involves a broad range of external and internal stakeholders, and I addressed that with that first question. Provides for systematic and organized means to identify community values and issues. Allows for creative or out-of-the-box brainstorming, and ultimately results in a community vision statement that describes a shared community direction. And stop me if you have any questions as we go along. So the why, why would we do a community vision? Well, I think it's summed up best by some, some interesting quotes. If you don't know where you are going, you might end up somewhere else. And I think there's a lot of truth to that. If we don't really know where we're going, we as a council, and I as your manager, every year when we budget, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can on what we believe are the priorities of the community. A process like this helps us define what that is, so that where we're going, we end up where we want to be. Determine that the thing can be, can and shall be done, and then we shall find the way. Abraham Lincoln. Or David Henry Thoreau. In the long run, men hit only what they aim at. And finally, where there is no vision, the people perish, out of Proverbs 29. So let's talk about the elements of community visioning. More than anything else, it's an overarching public outreach, and the collection of data and community input. It's what I call the what-we-think element that goes into community visioning. And that's kind of the basis or the foundation, what we think as a community, and just determining what that is and distilling it down. Also, the assessment of environmental and demographic factors, and development of a community profile, which ultimately, that's who we are. What makes us residents of Lebanon? Then also, the actual development of the vision statement, which is really a statement of what we want to become, because we've defined who we are, so what do we want to do with that? Where do we want to go? What do we want to become? And then finally, out of, as part of that vision statement, we anticipate there'll be six to 10 key focus areas that will help us realize that vision over time. And that's really kind of a map of how we get to our future vision. So what community visioning is not? It is not a document limited to the city organization. This is not just merely a goal-setting process for the city. In fact, the goal-setting for the city comes afterwards. But it is actually, it's a vision that will have elements in it, those, those focus areas I spoke of. There probably will be some of those that really aren't directly addressed to the city, but could bear on some of our nonprofit organizations, on our schools, on the business sector, what have you. The city of Dallas, Oregon, just went through a very similar process to this. The city manager there tells me that probably about 60% of the, the focus elements bear directly on the city. The others are to the, to community organizations to fulfill. So when we do this, it's more than just us as a city organization. It has applicability to organizations throughout the community. And it's also not a detailed strategic plan that has specific goals in it. Ultimately, after we get the vision established and we know what the focus areas are, then the city and other organizations should, and we will as a city, I guarantee you, and with encouragement, I'm hoping nonprofits and community groups will also go to work to build the specific goals and the action plans that'll be needed to implement each of those focus areas. And in the totality of implementing all those focus areas, ultimately, that's how we arrive at that, that vision that we establish for 2040. So, I want to go over our process so you understand what to expect going forward. So if the request for proposals that's before you tonight is approved, then that'll be issued tomorrow to the facilitation consulting community in Oregon. The city will form a vision process steering committee. That's a group that's going to kind of oversee what the consultants are working on, meet with them on some sort of a regular basis. I see that committee composed of a couple of individuals from the council, myself, maybe another staff member or two, and then some key people from the community or community organizations, so that it's, it won't be exactly a representative of a cross-section of the community, but there will be varied interest represented on it. The committee will evaluate, negotiate, or evaluate all the different proposals that we receive from the various consultants, negotiate contract terms with whoever the committee believes the contract should be given to, and ultimately recommend a consultant team to me as the city manager. I'll receive that, review the work of the committee, and then very likely recommend the same to the city council for approval. And then upon council approval, that contract would be awarded to the consultant team. The consultant team at that point begins implementing the 2040 plan. I anticipate that, if everything goes as, as we anticipate, it would be about mid-October when we'd see implementation beginning, and it's generally probably a nine-to-10-month process. Then the committee would, would actually oversee the, the work of the consultant, as I mentioned earlier. Consultant team then would present the project outcomes, which would be findings, the value statement, and the community vision statement to the city council. The city council then, after reviewing that, would adopt the community vision statement. And then that's when the next phase begins, and that's where we as a city look at those specific focus areas, or those key focus areas, and determine what resources and what action plans we need to put together, what goals, so we can start carrying that vision forward to bring that to a reality. So ultimately, I was, I was asked by, by the Lebanon Express how this saves money. And I'll tell you that this is the best money I believe this council in its current term will ever spend. And the reason for that is that you have basically a $35 million budget, and right now, we allocate that budget based on our best understanding of what the community wants to see accomplished in the direction that we're going. This defines it. So no longer will we put money into, to areas where really accomplishment of the vision, which is that common idea of where we want to go, that won't happen anymore. And those monies will be better and more efficiently placed exactly where they need to be to bring about the improvements and the changes, even the infrastructure, if that's the case, that needs to take place, so that when we get to our 2040 period of time, we have realized our vision are substantially so. So, questions? We can get the lights, please. I also added, in the, the council packet tonight, there's a, a staff report from myself. Should you approve the RFP tonight? It will be issued tomorrow. I will need to come back to you at the September council meeting with a budget amendment for a partial of the funding for this project. The project will extend over the next fiscal year, not only this one, but will go into the next fiscal year, so there'll be funding split between the two years. I anticipate that that funding will come from not only the general fund, but some of the other operating funds. The reason for that, and I'll, I'll use the water sewer funds as examples, the reason for that is that as we determine what those focus areas are, invariably, there will be some impacts on our infrastructure. If, for example, downtown revitalization ends up being one of the focus areas, that will have implications on water, sewer, streets, any number of areas that the city's involved in beyond the general fund. So as far as how do we pay for this, it's something that I believe philosophically should be spread around to the various operating funds. And then I, like I said, it'd be split between the two fiscal years, this current one and the next. So if there are questions, I'd be happy to respond to those.
I mean, that seems somewhat aggressive, but I like the fact that it is. Is that based on some experience you've had in other communities and/or other city managers have shared with you their experiences?
Some of both. In the city of Ketchum, while I was there, we went through a fairly aggressive, comprehensive plan review and update, where we incorporated a lot of public input, a lot of outreach. We used some innovative techniques like the instantaneous voting pads, where you would have a group of folks assembled in a, in a room, and questions would be put up on the screen, and people could vote immediately about what they thought about a certain question or, or some kind of outcome that might come out of a, a, a plan. And immediately, the computer tabulates that and shows up on the screen what the cross-section of opinions are. And it had an amazing effect on folks, especially if you were an outlier, to see that your community was focused in a, a different place. But it also provided reinforcement to those who were in the mainstay of, of the opinion that they were moving in the right direction, so it helped give focus and direction. So yes, we did do that in, in Ketchum. I think it was an excellent process for bringing people together, to increasing understanding across the various social, economic groups in the community. And then in addition to that, yes, I have interacted with my own colleagues. As I mentioned, I made a point of actually going over to the city of Dallas and having lunch with the city manager there. They've gone through a process that's fairly identical to what I'm proposing here. They went through this just about, they finished it about, I believe it was six months ago. So I wanted to kind of pick his brain about what his experiences were, what he'd do differently, and so forth. He said that the results were pretty much what they had hoped for, that they had established several focus areas, that the ones that bore directly on the city were now being analyzed by the city council, and action plans were being developed to move those areas forward. I should also say that it's not something, I don't want to feel too overwhelming, not all focus areas are acted on immediately. There's a priority, because you can't do everything to get yourselves to the year 2040 in the course of a year or two. So it's a long-range look at where, what we need to do, and so one of the, one of the challenges for the city council will be to look at those focus areas and decide a priority to what, what logically needs to happen first, and then after that, and then begin to develop action plans for each of those. So when I asked the city manager in Dallas what he would do differently, he said that he would emphasize to his council and to his community that the vision itself was not the end of the process, that there should not be an expectation, that there's detailed action plans for all the various organizations in the community, the city included, and that you'd immediately be able to begin implementing that. Once the vision is done, the city and each of, of the community groups needs to then focus on its piece and develop those, those aspects of, of the goal-setting they need to accomplish, and deciding how to realign their resources to make those things happen. So there is, it's a two-step process. There's the vision, and then there's the, the strategic planning part of it that comes afterwards, that actually implements and moves you towards that vision.
In Dallas, did the manager have any indication or did you discuss how much of the cross-section of, of the population actually were, was involved?
He, he felt that it was quite successful in reaching out to various groups. They did community meetings, they did surveys on various media. There were some groups that they were having a hard time getting to, so they finally resorted to a survey, and did an outreach there, and, and did their, their samples for those groups. But through the whole collective of it, that he felt like he got a pretty good cross-section. I asked him if he would approach it differently, and he said, no, I really wouldn't. I really got to the point where I had hoped we would get, so.
And how did we come up with $50,000 as the guideline? Is that, how much did Dallas spend on the process?
You know, there's nothing magic about that number, Rebecca. I, I actually spoke with several of the consultants around the state who do this kind of work, wanted to try to get a feel from them, what different programs would cost. There's more extensive ways to do this. City of Hillsborough went through a process that, oh my gosh, was so much more complex than this, that I think it cost them a couple hundred thousand dollars. That certainly wasn't something that I knew that we had a taste for, nor did we want to get into that kind of detail. But after talking to the consultants, and then actually looking at the RFP that Dallas had used, and in that RFP, Dallas had specified not more than $50,000. And so when I saw that, I thought, well, that's probably an attainable goal for us, based on what I understood that consultants could accomplish for that kind of money. And seeing that Dallas had accomplished it and felt good about where it had arrived, I felt that was something that was a worthwhile goal to put forward to you.
So did they, go ahead, Mayor.
A couple of questions. Number one, with the city of Dallas and or here in your time in Lebanon, has there been businesses or, or community organizations that's approached the city, that's been going through a similar process themselves, and is asked to partner? a similar process themselves, and has asked to partner?
In Dallas?
In Dallas, or here in Lebanon?
Yeah. Actually, the Dallas process, as I understand it, came out of an economic development group that actually approached the city and said, "Look, we don't have a common vision here. We don't know where we're going. Would you do something that would help bring the community together and determine some way that we can know that all of our resources are being pretty much directed in the same way, so that we're not working at cross purposes, or even going off on tangents where we're wasting money?" So that's my understanding, that it wasn't actually a project that was the idea of the city of Dallas, but rather was brought to them through an economic development group.
A couple comments I'd like to make. I went to the visioning process seminar by the League of Oregon Cities earlier in March this year, and basically have kind of found pretty much what Gary had found out, all the different information. The gentleman who did it was the guy who did the Hillsborough one. He's a consultant, former Hillsborough employee, city employee. And he's a consultant now that does this. And it was really an interesting seminar. I learned a lot about this process, and what it does, what it is and what it isn't. And the biggest misconception is, is that you do this plan, and magically, something happens. And that's where the work starts, is after the plan is done. Everybody comes together and gets this vision, and then you put forward, "How are we going to move forward?" One of the problems I've seen when I've talked to employees and former employees that worked here, was that they never knew the direction of where we were going. When you're doing your budget, you need to know where the city council wants you to go, where the city wants everybody to go. And it's kind of hard, because you have this kind of piecemeal approach. By each year, we do the, we have our goals, we set our goals for this year, but that doesn't help us 10 years down the road. And I think that's where things like the water plant and other issues have come up, where we didn't plan ahead, and we didn't have this vision, saying, "Well, the community wants to have a new water treatment plan in 20 years, or 10 years," or whatever it was. So I think this is really an excellent proposal by the city manager. I'm excited about it. And I remember also, if you recall, the 2020 vision plan that Rob Hess did, when he came in town, and the school district was just a mess, and the response, because I met with him before the election when I ran, because I wanted to understand, because I wanted a vision process. And he explained it, and he's willing to work with us too, and Gary, and give a lending hand. But they had excellent, excellent turnout from the community. The community really was involved. And they had meeting after meeting, where everybody could go, you could do it online, you could, there was all kinds of ways, everybody could respond. And that's what Gary is envisioning, is that everybody should take part, the more the better. And there's always going to be people that aren't. But we want to get the biggest cross-section. And then once we have a vision, we, as the council, can then make better decisions, what the community really wants. You know, do we want to be a manufacturing community? Do we want to be an educational community? All those kinds of things kind of get wrapped up into this, and give us, I think, a little bit better direction. Sorry, I didn't mean to get so winded, but I'm kind of passionate about this.
Other questions?
Well, and I just would encourage and follow up on the point that you're making, Partnering with any of those organizations that you've identified, Gary, because they may be, some of them may be in the middle of a process themselves, at some stage in development of it. And my experience with these plans is that it's not just something that you do once, but it's got to be reevaluated every five or 10 years-
Oh, yeah.
...in order to ensure that, have there been any major forces that change that, or make resources more available, or change the demographics of the community, so that there ought to be additional things that are reprioritized? So I think my encouragement would be, is that this is the beginning of a dynamic process for the city of Lebanon, something that is engaged in on a regular basis. Great.
I would completely agree with that. You know, I cannot look at you with a straight face and say, "Five years from now, you know, when this plan is five years old, and we look back on it, that everything about it is going to be exactly where the community thinks it ought to be then." Things change, conditions change, but it's a dynamic process, where probably five years is a good increment of time. You should do a fundamental review of your strategic direction, and whether it makes sense, or what tweaks need to be made, to make sure that you're still in tune with the community. This is a first investment into that process, to get that initial definition about where we need to go.
Any other questions?
Call for the question.
Do we have a, just a motion? A call for motion?
I would make a motion that we authorize the city manager to offer RFP to those consulting firms for the visionary, visioning process.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the community vision facilitator RFP. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Gary, for your work on that. And as he gets back into his seat, he'll have his city manager's report.
I want to thank the council for that. Actually, I consider it a vote of confidence, moving forward. The vision really was, kind of is, at the center of how I saw my administration of the city going forward. It was the basis for it. And so I do appreciate your support in that regard. And I think we're in for some exciting times, and I'm hoping to get some interesting surprises out of this, that we come away feeling much better about ourselves and where we're going, and have the confidence that as projects come up and they're proposed to us, that we'll have a much better feel for what belongs in the community focus, and what really resources shouldn't be put towards. So I'm excited about it, so thank you. As far as my city manager report, I'll just hit on a few things here. Our asking, negotiations are nearing a conclusion. This year, we didn't have the whole contract to look at, but it was just a wage and benefit opener. And so the negotiations have been confined to wages and the health insurance element. I feel good about that process. Frank Frenzel, who is the union president this time, he and I have developed a good, solid, trusting relationship, so we've been able to do this without, I feel, playing a lot of games and just being straightforward. And we're working very constructively at this point towards an ultimate agreement that I'm hopeful to bring to you at the next council meeting. So I feel good about the process that's in place with that. Also, at the next meeting, I anticipate bringing to you a lease agreement for the north lobby of this building, for the Albany and Eastern Railroad. As you know, the railroad anticipates furthering its project of offering excursion train trips. And they want to use the north lobby as a staging area for those operations, for loading and unloading passengers. And so I'll be bringing forward a lease agreement that I've hammered out with the railroad for your consideration at the next meeting. And then, as you know, negotiations with the city of Albany still are hanging out there. We've got a session on the 28th, which, we actually haven't met with them since the last council meeting. But we anticipate a session on the 28th, where we will hear their response to the issues as they exist right now. So we'll be updating you in those regards. And I think the rest of us is self-explanatory, but if you have any questions about anything in my report, I'd be happy to respond to those. Thank you.
Items from council? I have a few, if no one else does. Honor Flight, the movie, will be Saturday, 1:00 p.m. at the River Center. And if you can make it, it would be great. Tickets are on sale at Bircham's Metal in Albany, and also at the Chamber here in Lebanon. And that was really neat. We were able to bring my dad in last year and watch the movie. And he had been back on a reunion a while back with his military buddies, so he really wasn't excited to go. But he really enjoyed the movie, and enjoyed the fellowship with the other veterans. So it's really a neat time. And it's kind of neat, even if you're not a veteran, or don't even have family members, just to go support. And it was just, it was an awesome time. So we'll be out there, looking forward to that. Went to the mayor's conferences past week in Pendleton, Oregon mayor's conference, and that was a fun event. Last year was in Corvallis, so I just commuted, and this year was kind of a long trip to Pendleton. Never been to Eastern Oregon, it was really fun. Just wanted to touch on a couple of things I went through. One of the first things I did was branding your community, and it was given by Mayor Phil Hawke from Pendleton. And it was talking about how Pendleton has branded themselves, because as soon as I say Pendleton, you all immediately think of Roundup. You just do. Or maybe the location-
Whiskey. I was thinking whiskey.
Whiskey, well, and that's synonymous, which is interesting you say that, because that's synonymous with the Roundup. And that's where it all came. It was fascinating, and understanding the bar called Letter Buck that's underneath the thing only serves whiskey. And so that was even an interesting, under the stands. But the logo that was painted in the '20s by the one painter that came in, he actually got it printed in the Oregonian. And that figure became their logo, and they've trademarked that, and it is on everything in Pendleton. You cannot go to the bathroom and not see that logo. I mean, it is just everywhere. But what was interesting was, is tying it in with our visioning process, they didn't necessarily set out to do that, but they had done it over years and years. They had just kept putting the same thing out, the same Roundup information, and having it year after year, and it's just grown and grown to what it is now. And it's just a tremendous marketing that they've done, and where they've left it. And one of the things that was interesting is, he was explaining, they're concerned about social media right now, that they don't want to, I don't want to say bastardize, but they kind of don't want to cheapen the whole brand, so they're really being careful how they put it on their website, and how they do social media, because it's such an Old West, and it's such a gritty thing that they do. It was just fascinating, listening to their whole branding of their community, and they've done quite a good job on it. I went to, is your city communicating strategically? And honestly, I probably could have given one of the talks and been one of the panel members, because everything I was listening to, people were having problems with. And the few people that were up there that had really good ideas, we're pretty much doing all that now. Talking about Facebook, and a lot of the cities, smaller cities are having difficulty because they're not getting people on Facebook or their website. So that was, it was kind of interesting. And then one that was very fascinating was unmanned aerial vehicles, which is drones, essentially. They had a session on that. I was fascinated, because I thought it was going to talk about legislation in our cities, how that was going to happen. But what's interesting is, is that the federal government authorized a program where there can be test sites for unmanned aerial vehicles. And the, one of the places that won was us, Alaska, and Hawaii went together, and we won having the test site organbed in, which I did not know. Telemok is the coast, Warm Springs is the middle, and Pendleton is our eastern. And all of those have test sites. And what the test site is, it's actually an economic development thing for the places that are going to have these. They're going to be testing the drones, how they fly with other airplanes in regular airspace, how they can deliver packages. And what will happen is, the companies will be testing products and creating new products, new drone things that carry packages. They're talking also about precision farming, where they can go out and they can identify places in a farm area where they can say, "Oh, this area's got bad crops, this needs more water." And then also firefighting is another big area that they're looking at. So all that testing is being done here in Oregon, and in Hawaii, and in Alaska. That was kind of an interesting thing. And then, lastly, how Pendleton has made steps to become drought-proof. One of the things that they're doing is fascinating, is I think they use five to eight wells for their water in Pendleton. Their well water was going down by several percent a year, and it was getting lower and lower. They worked out an agreement with the Umatilla Indians to get water off the Umatilla River during high-peak seasons, and over so many cubic foot per second, they would get the water, they would be able to pull the water in. So they got that instead of the wells. That water is taken, and Ron's looking at me, I've seen if I'm telling it right, they're taking that water and they're pumping it back into their groundwater. And that water has brought, over 10 years, has brought their level up to now surplus. They're now above what they were supposed to be. And they're actually looking at maybe selling that to particular agencies or particular cities. It's a fascinating, it's not something that necessarily applies to us, but what I loved about it was the out-of-the-box thinking. And I know that we do some things with wastewater, and some other things that are different too. So it was really fascinating. Let's see. And then lastly, I'm working with city manager Gary, Chief Stevenson, and the staff on a warming center solution. So if we run into bad weather this year, we're going to have some kind of solutions, and it might be a multifaceted solution, where one is where we get some heaters out at the park, and then secondly, when we get to a really certain, really cold temperature, we may go to a facility such as maybe the senior center, or wherever, and there would actually be a place for people to be inside. So we're working on that, and kind of working all the details out, and probably come back and present you something when things are a little bit more worked out. Because we need something, and that was a big issue last year. We had so many cold days for so long, it was just rough for people being outside.
Do we have a count on homeless numbers in Lebanon?
No, I don't have an exact number for you.
When we had the, the soup kitchen was open last year during this time, and they were using the warming station as a warming center before they had to close it, I think they were looking at about 15, like roughly 15 to 20.
Yeah, it was right around 15 to 20.
15 to 20, yeah.
Individuals or families?
I think people, from what I remember. And there were some people coming in for dinners, which would be normal. But as far as the actual warming and being there at night, and being out of the cold, I think it was about 15 to 20 people. So it's not huge, but it's enough. And then there was, it wasn't really super advertised, it was kind of a last-minute thing that the soup kitchen threw together, and we'd ask them-
It got down to five degrees.
Yeah.
It was like, oh my gosh.
Five degrees for several days.
Yeah.
And it was just-
That was crazy.
We had to do something, so. Jason, last year, put some heaters out at the park, and they put a little kind of tarp around the area, and gave them a little bit of a warming effect out there. So that actually helped, when it wasn't too bad. But once it got to five, it was-
Yeah.
It was pretty rough out there. Anyways, that's all I have. Anything else? Any items from the public comments? Was there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Okay, I see none. Items from the press?
All along, you were passed.
Thank you. And I figured out what you meant, thank you. It just took me a little while.
Well, just like your secretary, you said, was talking to this new council, and said she had to go to a meeting long range, I thought it was important, unless you would have to go to meetings, and I didn't.
Not Linda. Okay, items from the press?
I had to explain that one to her.
I was going to ask though, if there was any burning desires, so.
Well, the only thing is, I probably should keep quiet.
Oh, now you've done it.
Thanks, Greg.
It was an A reference.
Mark's talking about improving the city and getting things to go, and building up the city, and this and that. And I'm prejudiced. Like I told you earlier, I was building official, building inspector, and when the gravy gets rolling, all cities got their own building department. And they roll in the money, and it all goes to general fund. And when things slow down and back out, the first department to go is the building department. And they put it out the contract. And back when, I even bitched at the state legislature, that we need to keep that money in the building department to carry us through lax times. Instead of having a cash cow, you've got to hire a crew, you've got to buy rigs, you've got an office, and et cetera, to get it started. But when it's making money, it's the greatest thing since candy, but when it gets lax, like I say, it's the first department that goes.
Sure.
Actually, we do have a segregated fund for our building activity. It's not part of our general fund. We're doing exactly what you suggest.
I'm glad.
Thanks, Gary. Anything from the press?
So, I've been watching updates since the last meeting on the canal negotiations.
Has there been any updates on the canal negotiations?
No, there really hasn't been. It's been kind of quiet. We had a session scheduled for last week, and I ended up getting a cold, and we advised Albany that I had a cold, and, "Do you want to be in the same room with me?" They decided to postpone. So it got put off. That's the truth. That's why we're at the 28th now.
We're done with the comments from the public at this time, sorry. Was there anything else, Alex?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. And with that, we'll adjourn to executive session.